Going to open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee Meeting for Thursday, September 22nd. If we could stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And actually, we need a moment of silence for our past vice president, who actually just passed away suddenly. I'm sorry, vice principal. Mr. Cherevis was the vice principal at the Blackstone Millville High School when I was there. And I heard that it was a sudden to have a moment of silence for his family. Thank you. And we will do introduction of members.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Steve Tringalli, Millville.
Joanne Watson, Blackstone.
Brittany Dwyer, Student Representative.
Jack Gief, Student Representative.
Joget Jarrett, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
And Erin Bonacco, Millville. And moving along to our student representatives.
So there's really not much to report on in the first two weeks of school. It's been quiet and calm. Tomorrow is going to be our 80s Day, which we ran through last meeting. It's just, it's for the summer reading books, with the whole one book, one theme thing we did over the summer, reading the two books. It's just going to be various activities throughout the day. There's going to be workshops in the morning and a movie for the last two periods. We'll be going to regular classes for D period. Unfortunately, I have an AP class, so I'm going to be doing some learning tomorrow.
Me too.
Every day.
All right. So there's several things going on in band. This past Saturday, we placed first at Medford Home Show. We won best percussion, best music, and best guard. And we also got the high score out of the whole show. So that was a good start to the season. This Saturday is home show at Medway High School. It is a big fundraiser and that kind of stuff for the BMMAs. We encourage everyone to come in and see stuff. And Jack will tell about one of the fundraisers.
Speaking about the fundraisers for the BMMAs, there will be an opportunity to win a tractor donated by State Line Power to the Blackstone Millville Music Association, which was painted purple and gold by RK Auto and actually has custom lettering and designs on it with the Charger horse head and the original Charger horse on the front of the machine with 2015 U.S. Bands National Champions on it as well. So very cheap for an opportunity to win that. I wouldn't skip on it myself, but it'd be a conflict of interest if I did. When it comes to sports, we've got two volleyball varsity wins, one JV volleyball win, football won on Friday, and girl soccer have won multiple games so far.
Great.
That's about all we have for you.
Cross-country one this week.
I was just going to say cross-country varsity.
I was asking about that one. No one's ever told me.
Do we get to keep the tractor or does it get donated to the?
You get to keep it.
The person that wins.
Though I promise you that.
Twenty dollars a ticket, I think I saw.
Yes.
It looks really good. Did you see the pictures of it?
I'm going to put Kerry Davis's name on it. Remember?
Oh.
Every day he wanted to buy a lawnmower, wasn't he? A lawnmower.
He always wanted to.
I do promise you, if you happen to win it, expect calls at 2:00 a.m. asking how the tractor's doing, where it's stored, if it's being used to cut the grass, all these things. We'll be very protective of it.
When is the actual raffle? I'm sorry if you already said that.
It's going to be in early November after the last marching band show.
After November 12th?
Yeah. After they, after their performance in New Jersey.
Awesome. I actually saw a picture of it on Facebook, and I saw it in front of State Line on.
Those pictures were.
There was someone just standing there admiring it, actually.
They were pre-decal pictures, so now with the decals on it, I expect it's going to bring in a lot of money for the BMMAs.
Awesome. That's great.
That's very, very good.
That's great.
All right. Thank you very much.
You should come with raffle tickets. We would buy them.
What time is the home show?
It starts at 6:00 p.m.
Oh. But that's our home show.
It is.
Yes. We don't, we can't host it here.
Right. And I believe that we go on at 8:35.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the last one. And then, so it's 6:00 to 9:00. And, yeah. All right. Moving on to our first public forum. We'll keep moving since we have no, no one from the public here. To consent Agenda A, we have warrants, field trips, minutes of meaning for September 22nd. So for warrants, we have payroll and payables. Field trips, there are some listed here. For the MASC officers shop at Holy Cross for Student Council on October 20th, and seventh grade field trip to the ropes course at the YMCA in Attleboro, which is the same one they did last year, I believe. And the use of facilities for BMYBL basketball, for use of the Millville Elementary Gym, and a request for the way, the fees to be waived. So I just wanted to point that out. They're also asking for the middle school gym and the building fees to be waived, which I do believe is, has been our practice.
It has been our practice.
Always with the, because it's for the kids. So just want to make sure everyone saw that fee comment. So we can do these all together or we can break them up. The minutes from our executive session have been submitted, but they're still not listed on, they weren't part of the packet. I don't know why, so. But has everyone seen them?
Seen them. I disagree with them, and we didn't know what the process was, so.
Okay. That, to make a correction, so that we would, we wouldn't vote on it tonight anyway if that were the case. I don't, and I actually don't know if we can just.
So if you hadn't approved and signed them, I did make a note on them, amend with your notes, but I guess we just need to find out if that's acceptable.
And I actually read through, the minutes for September 8th do document what the disagreements were, even though they, those, it says what, you know, each of us recalled from that meeting. So, but they're not on here, so I'm just going to make a point of making sure they're on the next one with the notes, if that, unless you wanted to request a different way for that to happen.
That's fine.
So right now, I'm looking for a motion for consent Agenda A.
Move consent Agenda A.
Motion made by Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kara Anstey. And any discussion? All those in favor of consent Agenda A? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Unanimous. And moving on to school committee, we have our audit, auditors here for RE Brown and Company, and everyone has.
Lovely package.
Just wanted to say welcome to Mr. Bob Brown and Mr. Sean DeSorci from RE Brown.
Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is FY15's audit, which is the first year that Dave and I were here and the year before when Cobb was here. So thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening. As part of our financial audit, there's three products. The largest one is the audited financial statements for the district. The one big change in the statements this year, we had to implement a new pension standard, GASB's number 68, which meant that the entire pension liability, the unfunded liability with Worcester County Retirement System, had to be brought on the books at 100%, whereas before it had been phased in over time. So on page 47, it notes the effect that that had on the statements.
But that was a one-year.
It's a one-year thing.
And now we're there, so it's just keeping up with it.
Going forward, it'll just change each year based on an annual history.
I remember that conversation.
So it did lower the overall fund balance in the full accrual statements from 10, a little over 10 million down to 5 million.
5 million.
The overall fund balance is still in the positive, but it's mainly because our fixed assets, you know, exceed the debt and the other liabilities. One thing I did mention at the last meeting, a similar thing is going to happen to your post-employment benefits. When they changed this standard, it meant they were also going to change the post-employment benefit standard because they're constructed the same way. The original standard, you know, was over time for pension, and they did post-employment benefits the same way. Now that they changed the pension one, three years later, they're also going to change the old PEB one. So there'll be another hit three years from now.
Three years from now or three years from last year? This is.
Three years, three years. It'll be in fiscal 18. So the beginning balance for fiscal 18.
So, yeah, that's.
Fiscal 18, yes.
Next, next year when we're working on it.
Next go around.
So it, it doesn't look good on the numbers, but everybody's in the same boat.
Yeah.
Every government in the country is adopting the same standards. So when it comes to bond ratings, they all knew about these liabilities before, anyway, when they rated you, so you'll be in the same, you know, everybody theoretically will be in the same position. Going forward, you know, you may look to trying to fund post-employment benefits because at some point, local governments have funded versus others that don't, there'll start to be a difference in bond ratings at that time.
But the good news is, is they're 100% funded now, so it's, the money's there.
Well, the liability is 100% on the books. We haven't, on post-employment benefits.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm still talking about, but.
Right.
The benefit part, would, how are they, how are they funding them 100% when they fluctuate year to year?
Well, we're not funding them. I mean, the pension we're funding, based on a schedule from the county retirement system, the post-employment benefits, you're not funding. That's up to each individual government.
But if we did, how, are we basing it on the current year of our cost?
You, you, most governments, you'll just have to see how much you can afford to do.
Okay.
Nobody can come close generally to funding a significant part of the liability. But most governments.
It's only if someone stays unemployed, right? It's only if that post.
Oh, that's.
Say that again. Help me, help me understand this.
I thought he was talking retirement.
Health.
Post-retirement.
The post-employment benefits or the health benefits.
Right.
For retirees or?
Retirees.
For retirees.
You know, but a liability also accumulates for employees that, you know, half 20 years in, they're, they're going to get that benefit as well.
Yeah. So it's not, it's not.
Right. The big gap is when people retire before Medicare, and there's a big cost until Medicare kicks in.
Okay.
So is there a number? Like, where is that, I know it's not funded right now, but where has it fallen here?
On page 11, the post-employment benefits number that we've recognized is 7,200,000 already.
I see. So 7,236.
7,200,000 has been recognized.
Yeah. And instead of, we're going to have to fully.
But you're saying it's going to have to be more than that?
A lot, yes, see.
Considerably.
Yeah. Trying to find what page it's on here.
1,236, 600.
Where's post-employment benefits?
Keep going.
Yep.
More pages.
There you go. Yep. On page 40, the total potential liability is 14 million, so we've recognized about half of it.
I definitely understand the pension being 100% funded, but I, I guess we don't need to go into it, but.
Well.
Benefit-wise, that is almost a year-to-year thing. It's not.
We've always been paying on a pay-as-you-go basis.
Right.
Pay-as-you-go. I feel like that makes more sense, but.
But from an accounting standpoint, you're saying the law says we have to now.
Well, bond.
Right. There's a liability for every existing employee.
Right.
Obviously, someone who's been here one year, it's not significant, but someone who's been here 25 years, if they're going to retire.
There's a difference.
Well before 65, there's a gap there where you're paying for a full health plan.
And we have to account for 100% in FY18.
Fiscal 18, the entire estimates, based on the retirees and the current pool.
Right.
The whole liability will, will go from the 7 million to the 14 million.
14 million.
If nothing else changed between now and then.
And it's really the gap.
Yes.
It's till someone's on that Medicare, which I'm sure we could look at the trend over the last 10 years and.
Right.
And predict some way, you know? There's not many teachers going out at 55, 55 years old and having 10 years of, at least I don't think, is there?
I think that, and Bob and Sean may be able to validate this or not, but the trend that I have seen is that teachers of the last several years have postponed their retirement and have, have gotten closer to the 65 than they did when.
Yeah.
The incentive to go out early was in play.
Right. Okay.
That's the major item I wanted to point out about the audited financial statements. We also issued a single audit, what we referred to as a single audit report. It's the A1, O and B circular, A133 audit, which has to do with your federal grants that you receive, since you receive over half a million in federal money.
Is it labeled A1? I'm sorry.
On the front page, it does say A133, kind of in the middle.
It's, it's the one with the bigger, the grant line. A133.
The requirement to have a federal grant audit is moving up to $750,000, but the district gets enough aid that it'll remain in the, in the audit realm. Page four of that document lists your federal expenditures from federal grants.
Page four, if you have glasses.
Totalling about a million.
I know.
Yeah, it's about a million, one.
A million, one.
No, 1,082, 2,92.
You know, I see.
Right.
That we're receiving.
That's total.
That's great.
Federal.
Yeah.
Grant awards, and part of that is the school lunch and breakfast program.
Yep. That report did have some findings that were procedural. The findings really were just, by procedural, I just mean just that. There weren't any misspent funds or anything like that. It's just like filing a report late, maybe requesting a drawdown not by the guidelines that didn't fit when we looked at the same comparison. And we've seen improvement already on, in those areas. So we, we expect it not to encounter that in the future. The third report we issued is the smallest one of the group, Communication of Internal Control Related Matters. This is a repeat of last year, and we expect this to be, disappear next year as well. In the past, there's been involvement on the accounting side with Treasury to the extent that the segregation duties weren't ideal. We'd like the accounting person who accounts for the general ledger in cash not to be involved in the cash process.
And can you clarify for us, because we had some lengthy discussions after you left last ti, last year.
Mm-hmm.
The amount of money we're talking about in this, in this instance, for us?
Our view was had to do with the reconciliation, I mean, the actual recording of cash was being delegated more to, into accounting. We, I think we vetted.
But after we had our discussion last year, we have made changes. We don't, this, this finding wouldn't be the same now.
And that's what Bob mentioned.
Yeah, this is valid a year ago. It's not.
Correct.
No longer.
Right.
Valid today.
I think the response addresses it as well. I mean, is there a response? Yeah, there's a man's response.
And you were speaking of just actual cash on hand cafeteria and our petty cash per se?
No, I was, I'm more referring to the operation of bank accounts themselves.
But, but Alan, help me if I'm correct, we now have four people in the office who.
And there's a separation of duties.
Duties.
Yes.
So.
I do remember being correct.
Person taking in accounts is not putting them into the bank as well.
Absolutely.
And I think that's important to note as a result of the discussion last year. I wasn't here.
And.
But, right, right. And so it's important that the public knows that, that shifts were changed.
We actually made a correction.
Yeah.
The audit has done its job.
Correct.
Basically.
To point out deficiency, we fixed it.
Yeah.
It's not uncommon in smaller position office operations. There's a thing, major things I wanted to touch on, and I'm available for questions. Sean also, I should mention, Sean has been the supervisor on the audit for the last two years as well.
What's the other, what's the la, I'm sorry. What's the last piece? I didn't, I didn't get that.
Is that the, and the year?
Agreed upon procedures?
Yeah. That's a separate engagement. You had, you file a report with the state.
Oh, okay.
And we review it and issue a report on that.
Gotcha.
It's not really a financial statement, a report.
All right. Good.
So I'm sure, I'm sure the public always asks, so is our bond rating different? Does this have anything to do with our bond rating? Maybe you could just say a couple words on that to see if it's better, whether it or not.
Yeah. Our, the last time that we went through the bond rating process, a lot of it depends on both of the towns, Blackstone and Millville. So a lot of what the, the rating agencies are asking for is the town's financial positions as well. So as they go, we go. But I think it's important to note, and certainly Sean, who's, and Bob have seen this with Wen Cobb, and the professionalism now that we have and the certification that we have, we are doing a far better job, and we are redressing the deficiencies and the findings. So I think that's heading in the right direction, and the audit is doing its job.
Anything else you think we need to know?
No, the big thing coming in the future, as I mentioned, is the change in standards for the post-employment benefits.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the, all the help.
All right. Moving on to superintendent's evaluation and goals. To be clear, to, just so there's no confusion, we never went through our evaluation of Alan last time, so that, we're doing that, and you have prepared for us, which is starting the next year's process.
Yes, we did, yeah.
So I think if we start with last year's first, that will keep any confusion.
Right. So that's what Wendy gave us last time, based on our evaluations that we completed online in the Survey Monkey?
So everyone, it is. And so everyone's had a chance to review it. Joget may not have got, it was actually emailed, but it was part of our packet last time, and I don't think we included it this time. It, so, and it has to be a public evaluation, which is why we're going to just quickly run through it. I have it here. Do you want me to just run through each question and?
Sure.
Go with, I don't have the rating, the highest percentage? Is that how we want to present this? Or is there another way that?
Yeah. We, we, when we were trained, we were essentially told that you take, you would look at kind of the majority, and if there were any outliers, you kind of remove those from the process.
So I think this is actually printed with the, and, and to be clear, we are going to meet, I believe, after the next meeting in an executive session to discuss, I want to say, the final rating or, and then any monetary increases that, that would be done in executive session between eight of us. So I'll just run through the questions that we answered on, on the survey and where we rated Alan. I mean, I can, it's written out by percentage here, so I can actually just give it all, just so it's public. So standard one, instructional leadership. The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. Specifics include curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, and data-informed So, and Alan, to be clear, Alan had marked himself as needs improvement on this particular standard, and it looks like 75% of us agreed with needs improvement. 25% were proficient, and Alan has a copy of all the comments and separated evaluations. So of course, if you have any questions or concerns, you'll reach out to a committee member individually. The second one, student learning goal, increase rigor of curriculum at all grade levels. Use DDM to show 80% of classes with moderate or better growth. Increase student growth percentiles by 5%. Fuentes and Pennell, 80%, 80% of students increased by two reading levels or more, and add two additional AP courses. And definitely scattered here. So we had 12 and a half percent rated Alan as did not meet, 37.5% some progress, 12.5% significant progress, and 37.5% met, rated Alan as meeting that goal. And again, the comments are all listed separately. District improvement goal, successfully roll out and implement Envision's math program by having all K to five classrooms using it with integrity and all faculty trained through Continued PD. And significant progress, 12.5%. 75% rated Alan as meeting that standard, and 12.5% exceeded the standard. District improvement goal, increase all special education student MCAS scores and continue the positive trend from 2015 that saw proficient advanced scores increase across the district from 18% in 2014 to 27% in 2015, with the goal for 2016 to be 33% for special education students. Proficient advanced by implementing the co-teaching model, refining the social emotional program, increasing inclusive settings, and maintaining the continuum of service and delivery. 14.29% rated Alan as did not meet, 71.4% some progress, 14%, 14.29% significant progress. And that's actually only seven people answering that out of eight. Standard two, management of operations. The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling. And Alan had 100% proficient. District improvement goal, complete all technology initiatives, wireless project, Google School, and apps, the new website to facilitate technology integration into the curriculum to support the 21st century teaching and learning. We had 12.5% at some progress and 87.5% met, rated Alan as meeting that standard. Standard three, community engagement. The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community, organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the district and its schools. 12.5% unsatisfactory, 75% proficient, and 12.5% exemplary. Professional practice goal, increase communication to all stakeholders through electronic and social media, with at least one communication every four weeks, informing of changes, improvements, new items promoting the district. And we have 25% rating Alan as did not meet, 50% with some progress, 12.5% significant progress, and 12.5% met the standard. Professional culture. The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by nurturing and sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective. by nurturing and sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. We have 12.5% with needs improvement, 75% proficient, and 12.5 exemplary. Is there any questions or other additional comments? Should we, do we want, does anyone want to read their comments?
Well, my understanding of the process and how it has to be reported is that we need to, you know, we have percentages of varying things. We have to, we have to indicate, just like Alan had to indicate he was proficient or he needed improvement. We need to do that. So I think we do that on the majority of them because we have 75%, but we don't do that on a couple of them. So I think we have to go back to those and, and kind of.
Come to consensus, basically.
Come to a consensus, determine a rating, whatever. Like, for example, I think the first one, Alan agreed, we all agreed, kind of needs improvement. And that's why you'll see it on next year's again type of thing. But the next one.
Yeah, so what I did, and I don't know, I, there was a way to break it down. Let me see if it's still on my, dropping the high and the low to get a better look at the average. With the use of Survey Monkey, which is what we use to prepare this. I didn't, I'll, I'll read out what it, it gave me. I didn't quite feel that it was 100% accurate. So I don't know if we want to use the results from Survey Monkey or if we want to sit here and discuss where we feel the averages leave him? That might be a better, a better fit for what we do. I did, even though I wasn't answering my phone today, I was working on this. So just to give an example of what it looked like when I removed the high and the outliers, as Jane called it. So question one, needs improvement. That was, it was, that one was actually easy.
Yeah, that was easy.
So moving on to question two, removing the high and the low.
Well, there's two highs and two lows. See, that's the, that's the one we can't, there is no, it's, that's the one I think we have to have a discussion on. Because we have, you know, a significant number.
So actually doing it this way, it don't, the way I did it on.
Survey Monkey?
Survey Monkey, it actually, I, I took out the high, but there were, there was no met or exceeded. I'm sorry, there was no exceeded.
Right.
So I, but I didn't take out the three met, so. But it still came in as needs improvement. So I didn't feel. Hold on, is this the right one? Let me make sure that these are matching.
That was the correct one.
Sorry, hold on, next one. Here we go. Again, it only, it only removed the, because there were three in agree, it was 75% for met. There wasn't actually a high outlier. It only removed the did not meet, which I don't know if that's how we.
I think you would, but I don't know. I, I think this.
This averaged him as some progress.
And it probably would if you, if you did them. I, I think that this is the perfect example of one of those goals that we all debated as a committee when we were talking about goals and evaluation and, and what a person has to, to present. And so I did spend quite a bit of time reading through the standards for superintendent evaluation. As I know, a lot of people have too, and I went even back to our notes and the slideshow that was given to us when we were trained on it. And it really is the school committee members' responsibility to do this evaluation process, to stay up on it, to collect the data as it's given to us. And I really feel like this question in particular is one of the ones that we just didn't do our due diligence in collecting the data when it was given to us. Because I, I can answer the question, and so perhaps we responded to this based on lack of knowledge as opposed to whether, not whether or not it was met. And so this is where we should have probably asked more questions. You know, I know we added more than two AP classes last year. We added a lot more than two. But do I know if we had a 5% growth on, I can't even say, Fuentes and Pennell?
Fuentes and Pennell.
I don't, I don't know that. So I'm not sure how we rate a superintendent if we don't have the information.
So are you saying that you feel like you should have found?
I should have asked the question.
You should have asked for the.
I, I should have, as it's going, like, let's, trying to think of one that, that's put in for next year, but.
Well, I, let's use this one, the Fuentes and Pennell. You didn't have an answer to it, and you feel like it's, you, it's your responsibility, you should have found the answer.
Because I know that we were presented, we had, when we had the meeting over in Millville, we were given all of the kind of student scores and where they stood and, and what, what was improved and, and needs improved, and that was some old MCAS data, but we had some data from special ed in terms of statistics. And, you know, I, I guess what I'm saying is we need to keep these goals in front of us as we go through the year. They're fluid. They're gonna change, they're gonna, you know, waiver a little bit, but they need to be in front of us so that when somebody's giving us an audit report, we go, oh, that was one of the goals, to make sure we were fiscally sound. And we, we, we make some mental notes of that. Because it's not the superintendent's responsibility to come with a data book. It really isn't, even though I know that that was asked for of him. It's not his responsibility at the end of the year to say, oh, look, all these magnificent things I did through the year, here they are. It's our duty to say, okay, those are the goals. Oh, this is some information that meets this goal. I need to either keep it in a file, or I need to keep it mentally, or however, and go through the process. And then when things aren't met and we say needs improvement, then we as a committee need to say, okay, we think you need some improvement in this area, here are some things we would look for. Just like if you were a principal and you were trying to get a teacher who needs improvement, you, you give them guidance, you give them direction for the.
Reflective dialogue.
Thank you. I don't know the educational term, but, or same thing in the corporate world. If you're, if you're evaluating an employee and you say, oh, you didn't really get this right, you don't leave it at that. You, you work on a plan to, to improve.
I think too, part of the, part of the concern is the balance between supporting all of the goals with evidence and artifacts as we go through the year. And superintendent's work is a little more public in some cases and very private in others. But I certainly think that the pledge will be to collect as we go throughout the year. So it's not a, trying to re, piece it together at the end of the year. So whatever we can do during the course of the year to support and, and make sure that everyone has a comfort level with what the work is to meet those goals, that will be what we do this year.
Well, with all due respect to what Jane's saying, I, I disagree in the fact of us having to ask for it. Alan, we're, we're presenting the, we, he knows what his goals are, so the Fuentes and Pennell should have been somewhere in the nine months of our meetings. Like you just said, some of it's very public, some of it isn't, but, but with the eight of us, and you know what we are looking for, it should at some point, I, I know what you're saying, it's, it shouldn't be handed to us in a folder in June. But you should have, we should have been able to remember when he gave it to us.
And it also should be, I mean, we, we have created a evaluation subcommittee, and it really should be the, the job of that subcommittee to keep this at the forefront and, you know, as information comes.
Correct, correct. For this, for what we're talking about today is a year, you know, for the year behind us. And unfortunately, that's not the way we did it, and I think a lot of us were expecting, I know I was. And, and I mean, I'm, I, my names are on the comments, as all of us are. My first sentence was, I don't feel we have the data to measure this growth. And I did look for it. I, it's not that I was like, oh, he didn't give it to me in a folder. It was, it was, there was a lot in it. When, when it was time to sit down and, and rate him for this particular goal, it's not something that we would have gotten all in one meeting.
Correct, exactly.
You know, and I understand that in his defense, except that we did tell, we, there were certain expectations when we gave him the goals on what we were expecting to see, you know, to, to show this growth. So I, I definitely understand what you're saying, Jane, but I think without the, the data in front of us, it may, may be the reason that these ratings are so vastly different between all of us.
The only other thing I would add is that not just at these meetings, but there should also be meetings throughout the year with the chair and the vice chair and the superintendent on the off weeks. Meetings, regular meetings to go over some of this stuff as well. So that, that has to be an area that improves as well on our part and on Alan's part.
And there are a lot of things, like, there should be a timeline for this. When do the Fuentes and Pennell scores come out, for example? Okay, report on those. But actually, just looking at this, not the Monday morning quarterback, too bad, but this goal is a mess. This goal, as is written, is all over the place.
It's every, yeah.
I mean, in, increased rigor of curriculum at all grade levels. That's incredibly broad. I mean, at kindergarten art class, all the way up to calculus or advanced placement calculus. Use DDM to show 80% of classes. And then the last one, add two additional AP courses. How is that student learning? Isn't that our job to find the money to carve out these additional courses? How'd that guy kind of lumped in? So maybe that's why the scores are all over the map. This, this goal is impossible to be covered. You know, it's all over the place.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Not so smart goal.
You know, and, and we're learning too. You know, we're, we're learning this process and, you know, hopefully as we go on. And I, and kudos to Wendy, I mean, she's really been on top of this, and she's really, you know, driven home trying to make sure that they're measurable and, and specific and timely and whatever all those smarty things are.
So do we want to, so it actually came in, met and some progress were equal when we dropped the, the did not meet. There's three some progress and three met, so.
What did Alan rate himself on this one? He don't have it. Do we have that?
You have that? Your ratings?
I would say, I would agree with the some progress on that.
I, I don't know, it's split, it's 50/50, so. Honestly, if you take the three some progress and the three met and meet in the middle, it's significant progress.
Significant progress, yeah.
So I, I mean, I would be comfortable with, with making, meeting it in the middle, but there are eight of us, so. Any other thoughts on that?
I'm fine with that.
Sure.
So it'll be significant progress?
Yeah.
Because I think we have made significant progress in the rigor of our academic.
Yeah.
Except that we really still don't know the Fuentes.
Let's split it up for next, the next one.
Which is not in the next one.
All right.
It might be in their district improvement goals, but it's not.
All right, so moving on, we have goal number three. I apologize, I'm not gonna read these all over again.
No.
We have, we have a timeline here. So when I took out the high and the low, it was, well, it's already met, it's 75% as a met. Do we all agree on met for just for standard three? And. So. Number four.
Some progress?
It did, it did come out as some progress, which we already rated. Please just stop me if someone has a question. 100% proficient on number six, I'm sorry, number five. And number six was 87% met, so any discussion on the technology part of it? And number seven came in as proficient. There's, there were two, there was, they both canceled themselves out for exemplary and unsatisfactory. We agree on proficient? And number eight. Dropping the. See, this is the one that would, I, I felt wouldn't have been, because there were two do not meets and. But it still came out as some progress, which was 50% on our, you know, when you break it down with the eight. Any discussion on that? Do we agree on some progress for number eight? And the majority is proficient, 75% for number nine. Do you feel that we fulfilled that by coming to the, okay. So I think, but the part I spoke of, about going into executive session and speaking about Alan's, the personal part of it, we, we will do after the next meeting, based on these answers. Correct? That's.
Sure.
And if anyone does not have their copy from last meeting, just let me know and I'll email you another one. I think there's a folder for you. Any other questions or comments about that part of Alan's evaluation? So that's wrapping up last year's, that's wrapping up essentially to July 1st of this year. And the subcommittee that Jane just mentioned is, sat with Alan and worked on the goals for next year. And I believe we were all given this.
Yeah, purple folder.
Purple folder.
And there's two different sets in there. One was the, the one that's in black and white, without the big yellow bar across the top. That was the result of the subcommittee discussion. And then we sent it out to all of you, and we did get some feedback in there. And I am not a Google Docs expert, so I couldn't figure out how to not turn things green and red and get rid of the underlines. So I printed it in color. But in case you're wondering, the, the first one across the top, the first number one in yellow is just a sample of how the form should look. So it's, I couldn't, I couldn't delete it, so, but it's not one of our goals for Alan. It's just a, just a pretty yellow. But what, the discussion really went along with, what did we have from the past that was needs improvement or some progress that we still need to make progress on? So those are, are goals that you'll see repeated maybe from last year, but hopefully maybe defined a little bit more clearly. And then took a professional practice goal that Alan shared with us at the last meeting, a student learning goal that Alan shared with us at the last meeting, and kind of combined the things. Some of these goals you'll see in the district improvement plan as well. And, you know, we may have to have a discussion on, is this, is this too much for one person when they also have to focus on the district improvement goals and the student learning goals and the? And, you know, we may have to have a discussion on, is this, is this too much for one person when they also have to focus on the district improvement goals and the student learning goals and the, um, you know, is it, is it too much? Yeah. Too much for, for one person to do. But, um, it's also, we, we need to make sure that it's fluid. We need to make sure that, you know, if, if something's met, that we get the evidence for it and we kind of hit the check mark and we don't have to, you know, revisit each time. So, I think it's really important for the subcommittee to kind of stay on top of these things and, you know, be collecting this data and making sure that when something comes up, that we know. But anyway, the first one is, um, based on standard one, uh, curriculum to improve student learning by implementing the Big Ideas Math Program for Grade Six at the Middle School. And we will know that that's done when, um, the teachers have been trained in it, in PD, and they may have already, that has maybe already happened, I don't know. Um, and that when the curriculum is, is mapped. Somebody from the committee asked that, uh, a sample curriculum, curriculum be shared. I don't even know if that's possible.
Print it out?
Print it out, okay. Anybody else have anything change, question?
So, the goal, just so I understand this, the goal is to improve student learning by implementing Big Ideas Math Program for Grade Six, uh, the Middle School, and to ensure a smooth transition of one-on-one learning in grades nine and ten with, with Chromebook rollout. So, the benchmarks are going to be a curriculum that we're going to see.
Right.
And school committee will be appraised of relevant PD schedules associated with student learning goals. And parents will sign contracts for the use of Chromebooks in the fall. Parents will be provided with an evening program. So, if those six things, or whatever they are, five things are handed in, they've met that goal.
And we're done. Yeah. But, but it goes on to the next page, though. That one goes on to the next, the Chromebook one, because we would like to, we, we would like to see, um, kind of at the end of the year, did students really use them? Did teach, did staff use them? Did students use them?
Well, this calls for the update in January, which I think is good, is midpoint.
Update in Jan, January and June.
When does it get in the Chromebooks?
Well, that's kind of an issue. I don't, I mean, I'm hoping that we're going to have the Chromebooks in their hand by mid-October. So, January might be early.
It's too early, okay.
I don't know. I think kids are already using them.
Well, that's, that's fine. I mean, it's not.
But are they using them as part of the class? Are they using the ones that we gave them?
No, we didn't give, well, we have carts.
No, 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 no. This is the specific to grade nine and ten.
No, they are not.
So, does ninth and tenth have access to any Chromebooks at all right now?
Um, there are a few students who are bringing devices in right now, but there's several things that need to go into this process. I mean, and there's several bumps in the road. First is, we were not able to actually purchase them until the end of August instead of the beginning of June, so they were not set up over the summer. Uh, we then lost our tech director, so, uh, he has just opened the boxes this week. Um, and then, trying to figure out how we're going to put them on the network, which he is right now currently learning as he's running around. So.
So, would you be comfortable, Alan, if we moved to the January, or if we?
To March?
If it's just an update.
If it's just an update, are they being used?
Yeah. School committee will be giving an update of how Chromebooks are. I think January, I personally like January because we'll know where we stood from October.
That's fine.
And it could be worse. It could be Providence, the ones that were stolen off the FedEx truck.
Yeah.
Did you see that?
Yes.
Okay, we just back up for a second. I'm looking at the, the first one.
Okay.
To improve student learning by implementing the Big Ideas Math Program. Okay. The goal is to improve student learning. Look at key actions and benchmarks. Are students even mentioned? To improve student learning, and our actions are going to be, we're going to train the teachers. Are we going to, uh, pre and post-assess the students in any way?
Uh, yeah, um.
Is, is that the yardstick we're going to measure learning with?
That's later with the stars.
But I, I see your point, Steve.
Yeah.
How are we going to know how we improve their learning?
Yeah. Well, we're going to train the teachers. Yeah, but the goal is student learning. It's not.
But it might be.
Not staff learning.
So, do we need to change the goal, or the?
I think we need to add an assessment component to it.
Yeah, I, I would change that from student learning to curriculum, to be honest with you, because that's what you're doing there, is you're, is you're improving the curriculum.
Curriculum goal.
Which hopefully will then improve student learning.
Then we do need a student learning goal.
It's, we do. We have them.
Well, it's not only to improve the curriculum, it's to align the curriculum.
Well, standard A1 says curriculum, and it says all of the above.
Yeah, you do, you curriculum and instructional delivery.
Yeah.
Improving the delivery of the curriculum.
Yeah.
But it's not improving the student learning. Well, we're not measuring student learning.
No, we're not quantifying it here.
So, we can call it instructional delivery?
But what's our student learning goal?
No, no, no. We have, we have, we have.
This is still a draft, honestly.
It's under assessment. It's under assessment.
Well, the assessments will be measuring the student learning, but it's not our student learning goal.
Yeah, but the goal there is, but the benchmark is written as a growth.
As growth.
Student scores. And there's individual plans for development of improvement.
Correct. So, Steve, are you okay with number one, if it's curriculum and instructional delivery goal? Do we then, do our benchmarks then work?
We don't have a student learning goal.
Yeah, we still need to put some student learning in.
Do, it's assessment. We can call it student learning slash assessment.
So, number three?
Number three.
You just change, uh.
Still the same stand, standard one, standard one, standard one. Like, number one is student learning. So, all of these things, curriculum, um, diverse learner needs, assessment are all student learning.
But number three is only assess, number three is measuring.
Well, it's measuring and saying, what are we doing to, okay, we measured it. What have we done to improve it? And so, that's why we have, we want to see individual, uh, plans and, and scores improving. And then, are we improving even further at the byhand?
But we don't have a, a student learning goal that we're mentioning on number three that we're measuring. Does that, does that make sense? But it's not on here. Number three says to roll out the Stars Assessment Program. It doesn't have an actual, like.
To assess the math, the big ideas, math.
But you could, but you could add, you could add in, under three, standard one A.
Is it fair to say that Stars is going to measure the new math program?
It's going to measure their math ability. It's not necessarily going to measure the new math program, but the math program is aligned to the new standards.
Mm-hmm.
Which Stars will be measuring. So, it's kind of a leap, but. I mean, if you look at, if you look at the benchmarks, say, you're looking for fifty percent growth, and there's also individual student plans to develop improvement. So, that is student learning.
And ninety percent growth.
And, and in order to have the implementation, you have to be able, you have to have the implementation to do, to do the data analysis.
So, I think based on Steve's point, though, we need to change the goal under number one, from saying to improve student learning, to improve the curriculum.
Instructional.
Instructional delivery.
Yeah, instructional delivery, or to, to align the curriculum, or something like that.
How do you want to say that, Jean?
Yep, I got it. To align curriculum and improve instructional delivery. You okay with that, Alan?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. And we, we're still okay with ensure a smooth transition to one-on-one learning in grades nine and ten?
Hold on, where are you? What number are you on?
The second part under one.
Second part of.
Number one.
Number one. It was important to me, and this is just me, you know, I'm only a part of a committee, but that parents get involved in this somehow, because I think these, this technology's coming home with kids, or they have to get on, you know, um, ABC Learning or whatever, and, you know, parents sitting there going, um, you know, turn the button, hope, hope for the best. So, some kind of parent component was important. But if it's not to anybody else, we can delete it.
Well, I think that's a good point. I think the other point is, at the end of that, because I, I'm a backwards thinker, so, at the end of the June, uh, we're going to have information around how it was rolled out, and, um, an update on how it was used, and, uh, an end of the year report regarding data showing how many classes utilize it. So, you know, if fifty percent of the classes only use it, okay, that's, that really doesn't negate the whole goal.
Agreed.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want to say, oh, well, only fifty percent of the classes used it, so that needs improvement. It's, it's, it has to be around, it was rolled out, because the other reality is during the assessment, when we're saying, I'm leery about putting fifty percent, ninety percent growth, because really, you're, you're going to be assessing how Stars assesses, uh, grades three through nine, okay? What, what if our data says it didn't do a great job, but we'd still met the goal?
Well, but here's, here's, I think, what, the point I was trying to make, and I didn't make it well before, but in terms of us being fluid, because we're going to say, okay, we want to see the usage, uh, with the Chromebooks. And it might say only ten percent of the class used it. That allows us then to create another goal for next year to say, hey, we need to see improvement on that. If we're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on these Chromebooks, we, next year's goal is twenty percent improvement, or next year, the goal after that is thirty. We got to get it in.
Yep.
We got to, we got to get them using it.
There should be some dialogue in how it improved learning.
Right.
Yeah, but that's what I was going to say. It's a, I mean, Chromebooks are a tool.
Correct.
Chromebooks are not learning. So, I agree Chromebooks should be in some of these, in here somewhere, but I don't see how rolling out Chromebooks equals student learning. I, I think everything in the student learning needs to be data-driven, okay? Their scores were X in September, and they're twenty percent higher in January, and they're.
Here, so I, I.
I, I think that's why that works now well with your
Yeah.
instructional delivery of power, yeah, as opposed to.
So, we still need student learning.
Yeah, you can get it in number three.
Yeah. Well, and you get it in number two for diverse learners' needs. And, and the, the thing with number two, and that's probably the, um, the least smart of our goals, um, but our special ed, really, we need a better handle on, on, from a school committee perspective, of how that unit, area, department kind of meets the needs of the students, because it is such in flux, and it's in flux all the time. We have people coming in, we have people going out, we have people, whatever. But we really need kind of an evaluation of what is our special ed program, um, our, and it's not just a Loretta special ed person. It's, you know, the leadership of the, of all of the schools need to be involved in, um, special ed and, um, leadership team. And so, when the subcommittee had a discussion on this, it was like, really not easily measurable, other than to say, please make sure that it's on the front burner and that we're getting updated. We're continually getting updated on where.
So, maybe we're looking at it the wrong way. I, I just want to point out, we don't even have MCAS anymore. So, what, it's, it's not something we can compare it to MCAS-wise. It's PARK, right?
Well.
And is that a fair assessment?
MCAS two point O.
Is it a fair assessment to the special education community? On, on, is that really going to reflect on if everyone did their job every day? I mean, that, I don't, I I had trouble with that, the, when I really sat down and analyzed it this year. And I want, I made a mental note to myself about that, just because, yeah, based on what you just said. How do you measure that on a? I, I think, I think there's a way, but I don't think we're doing it the right way.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you're going from MCAS to PARK data to MCAS two point, two point O data.
So, we can, we can take the MCAS out and just say, using the Stars Assessment.
Right. There probably is some commonality. You could look for a particular strand.
Right.
But we don't know if it's tested the same way, et cetera.
But the, and that's why the action, even though that's the goal, is to really make our special, improvements in our special ed student learning. The, the action is really, let's get the leadership involved in special education. Let's figure out where we even, almost like this year, we're not looking as much for improvements as we're looking for benchmarks, so that we can measure improvements in the, in the future. Because we don't have good, we don't have good data in terms of special ed.
And I would, I'm, I would be greatly concerned with waiting until June of two thousand seventeen for the comprehensive evaluation coming to us. For, for a few reasons. The list we were given at our last meeting of, of resignations and new hires, it was, it was about fifty percent special ed employees. I don't think we should wait until June. I don't think we should wait out a whole school year to make sure that we are, but, but actually back up, because we need to see how we're, what we're basing it on. I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Maybe Loretta could give us guidance on this, because, but, but then, this is Alan's goal, so.
Right.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean. You certainly can get the comprehensive evaluation of the program for the end of the year. What I think we need to do is add in, um, an interim, um, frame, framework that you can, um, see the progress.
Any suggestions from?
Well, I think the special ed department must have goals for the year, you know, and Alan should oversee those goals and report back to us on what they are. I mean, I, I, you know, it's a little gray. I mean, I'm not going to get on my soapbox about operations and us, but it, I think if, the points that I'm hearing are valid in terms of there are maybe some struggles there, and what is the leadership team, not just, you know,
Right, exactly.
what's their plan for this year to analyze, look at, and come up with a different plan, going forward of the weak areas. I'm sure there's strengths too, but what, what are those? That's all.
And maybe that's what we could get earlier.
I'd say maybe by January, February, some sort of.
You know, how you're going to even assess it. Maybe that's what we get.
If you did it mid-year, you'd have, hopefully, some idea of where the areas are, that, to define them a little bit better, to, because that's, that's the goal. I mean, the hard part is finding what you're defining to try to meet.
My struggle is, every department should do that. You know what I mean? And every department's not coming back here and reporting on it, but if Alan's identified this as a goal in terms of meeting, and it's a goal in every school district, I'm, I'm, let's be honest, the, how do we, how do we, um, enhance those struggling learners, especially in special education, um, and, and help them reach their potential, whatever that is? But, you know, I mean, it, it's not, it's not unheard of to say, hey, this is where we're at, and this is where we're really struggling, and this is where we're going to do these three things differently this year, and, and move forward. You know, and Alan should be able to report that as his team is working on that. Right?
Right.
Well, maybe the way it's defined with the key actions, leave it that way, and just add to define and assess where improvements need to be made.
Right, right.
Well, I, I have a question, and without going too far back, um, based on one of his goal, one of the goals from last year, um, when we talked about the co-teaching model.
Right.
Um, again, I'm willing to share my comment of, you know, there was, there was, we were about to give a big push on co-teaching, and then, I, I, where do we stand with things that we already thought were in progress?
And I, and I think because that's one of the goals we kind of carried over, and when we were carrying it over, we said, we can't do that till we know this. It's like, that's the cart before the horse, um, because it's like, we don't, we don't know what the plan or the model is, really. So, to, to evaluate.
We thought we did.
We thought we did.
We thought we did.
So, so, we needed to take a step back and say, define for us what the plan, what the model for special ed in this, this district is, then.
And we do have one.
Let me sit with Loretta tomorrow.
What if we get, what if we find out what the model is that's being, and then measure that this year?
Let me sit with Loretta tomorrow and rewrite this.
Okay. All right. Uh, next one's assessment of student learning goal, assessment of, or assessment of student learning. We can say it that way. And that's to use this new Stars Assessment Program, um, grades three through nine, but in the three through nine, six to eight is using an enhanced version of Stars. Um, and they, they are to be, or perhaps have already been, I think some have already been, assessed in early fall.
Yeah, the fifth grade was assessed last year.
Yeah.
Um, this is a starting point. I mean, the middle school has used it, so they're ahead of the other schools, but yeah.
Yeah. Um, but to do those early fall assessments, look, look at the data, um, and then, mid-year, um, you know, growth from that point. So, if, if the fifth grade was last spring, by, you know, mid-year, January, whatever, where are they now? Have we seen any growth? If we haven't seen any growth, what's the plan to, to try to, to do that? And then, to see the end of the year, did we see other, and we, and the subcommittee said fifty, ninety, but you think that's?
Yeah. What if it's forty-two and seventy-two percent growth?
Some progress.
Can I ask?
Yeah, I think we have.
Can I ask a question? I mean, if you're looking for fifty percent.
I mean, if you're looking for fifty percent or half a year's worth of growth.
Right.
What portion of your students are supposed to meet that? Because ways written down, you're looking for a hundred percent of your students.
A hundred percent to get fifty percent growth.
Across all grade levels.
I mean, that, I think that's where you, you come back to. So I, I had those circled, so...
All right, so what do we, what do we, what is reasonable?
Why can't it just be growth?
Growth by grade?
I, I think a number attached to it is...
We're looking for smart goals.
It, it needs, it needs to have a percentage.
What if the Stars stinks?
Yeah.
But, but it didn't last year.
Yeah.
But it didn't last year.
Yeah. And then the play, you know, it isn't some...
You are working, you are working with people who have not used it before for two-thirds of your, of your district.
And we, it got rave reviews, and we expanded it for that reason. I mean, I think we should have faith in what we've put our money into.
Right, right, right. And it's supposed to help us, I mean, it's supposed to help us, and, and that's why someone who had sent me some feedback asked for, can we see a student sample of like, how would, so, so somebody takes it in the beginning, or last spring, and then they take it again midway, and they're not up to the, that fifty percent, you know, is there a special learning plan developed for them, is there? And so somebody said, can we see a sample of one of those learning plans?
But that, but it really is, and that would be very easy for that to be brought here.
Right.
Because I, I, I mean, that's how it was handled in the middle school last year.
But now, to Bill's point, is, I mean, is growth, growth? So, is fifty, like, where did the fifty percent come from? Is that a standard growth rate for that, for Stars? Or like, did somebody just say fifty percent?
I don't know.
At least fifty percent of students will show significant growth.
Oh, okay.
So it, so it did come from somewhere, it wasn't just, it wasn't just a made-up number.
Okay, so then, my next question is, and I'm just trying to share, shorten the conversation at the other end. Define significant.
Yeah, that's, that was going to be mine.
Right.
Will show ten percent? Grow, what does the, what does the program give us? So in other words, I take it, I take a, a Stars math assessment, and it says that I'm at, I'm, I'm going into grade six, and it says that I'm at grade five level. I, I don't even know what tells you.
So take out significant and simply say growth.
Um, but, but then, so mid-year, should I be at five point five? What does it tell, or?
Basically, what it, what it says, yeah. Basically, what it does is, it, it assesses your ability for where you should be at, whether you're on target to be ready for, you know, the evaluations at the end of the year. It's basically what it does. If you're off-target, then it gives you an intervention plan. If you're above-target, it gives you a, you know,
Challenge.
extension cha, and challenge, sort of thing, is what it does.
So...
What they've done here at the middle school, which we don't really know if we can replicate at other schools yet, part of it is to get used, used to the tools and the information, and figure out how we're going to use it. So this is going to be a process, especially in the elementary schools. But what they have done here is they have designed specific times to use that data so that students are put into groups based on whether they need to remediate
Right.
or whether they need to extend and practice.
So can we, can we say that fifty percent of the students are on, by mid-year, are on target? Is that, I mean, is that a?
Yeah, meet or exceed target.
Right.
Meet or exceed the target, and then, by the end of the year, eighty percent?
I, I don't know if the word target or grade level, it, on the assessment that comes home to a parent.
Can we just pull those numbers out of the air, though? Fifty, eighty, seventy-five, I mean, based on what, though?
Well, the way it's, the way it's worded now, I, I can agree with. You know, because when I read it, I'm like...
When you add of students.
If you add fifty percent of the students will be on target, that's a totally different meaning. And that, yeah. Listen, if we're not getting half the students on target, we got bigger problems than, than, than this
Right.
dialogue that we're having right now.
And this is, but, all right, and what students are we talking about? Through, uh, grades three to nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
So fifty percent of the students in each grade will be on, on target. And then by the end, end of the year...
Or do we only want to use the middle school because it's their second year, in fairness to what was just mentioned?
Yeah, I mean...
I don't, it's...
So how far you want to, you want to stretch it? I mean, I mean, my only, my only concern is the elementary schedule is pretty packed. And I know they have RTI time.
And that's when they'll do this.
But it's setting it up and getting that rolling.
So can we, can we just...
There's a bigger learning curve.
Can we keep the further rollout Stars assessment, keep the goal for all the grades, and roll that out for all the grades? And, and roll, and, and assume that all the grades will do those three, three testing times? Because that's the action, that they'll be tested through time. But our, our benchmark will be based on middle school.
Sounds good.
I, I think that's a good idea, Jane, because not only are they, it's their second year using it, they, like Dave just mentioned, there's a plan in place.
There's a plan, yeah.
They're, they're reacting to the results.
And then they become your, they become your sample, your pilot for the others in the future.
Right.
But do it ninety percent, or, or is that? Ninety percent on target by the end of the year means ninety percent of those people are ready to go to the next grade.
Because it does tell you, to the student's report, it tells you...
If they're on grade level.
And above grade, it tells you, you know, your reading level is the tenth grade level.
Realistic, because you're talking special ed students, you're talking the whole grade.
That's why it's ninety percent.
Dang, all right.
So we're, what are we putting at ninety percent?
The end of the year, that they're on target.
Okay.
At grade level.
And, and do we have results from the end of last year?
I'm sure Mr. Cameron does, I do not, my finger does.
Because I was saying, it's, it seems like we're just throwing darts in the dark here.
Well, we're going to sit down and finalize, finalize these next week.
Numbers.
Yep, yep, yeah, these are, I think it would be good to see a sample of what this report, I, I've had them sent home.
So I know, I, I can see it in my mind, what...
Well, that's, you know, that's why we're kind of fleshing this out, and maybe we get more data before we finalize them.
But you're right, because if you show growth, then all of a sudden it goes far. Or both, it's supposed to be.
But I still don't think that shows a, a student learning goal. It's, that is a, that's showing their growth.
Well, but, but...
In order to grow, they have to learn.
They have to learn, right. That's assessing whether or not they've learned. And, and the plain fact of the matter is, if this program does what you're all saying that it does, and that it, it creates these learning plans for people, that's student learning. I mean, that's, that's...
I, I just don't think it's in the right category. It is, it's, but what are we putting in place this year to enhance the learning? The, the Stars is not enhancing our learning, it's enhancing our ability to measure their learning.
So middle school, though, is able to do those classes, but the elementary is...
So the classes would be the, the learning, it, yes. That's exactly what I was trying to say.
But, but Aaron, you can make that argument about why they put this assessment in student learning in general.
Oh, I like the, I'm just saying, we still need a, we still need, maybe it's in here, somewhere else.
No, probably not, but, because I think we have too much personally, but, but anyway, that's just me. All right, so the next one is, moving on to standard two, which is A, which is the environment. And it is really time that we look at the high school and, and JFK AFM, we use that, um, NESDEC. You know, we got that report, and we haven't really done anything with it. And so we're charging the superintendent to say, okay, it's time now to, to approach the towns and say, we've got to do some building. You know, some of it may be maintenance, but some of it's major capital campaign.
That's a great one.
I like that. It's just a really big one.
It's a big one, it's a big one.
It's going to be most of my year.
Yeah, it's, it's a big one, but it's, which is why, I guess, I'm not so gung-ho on adding some of that other extra stuff in the other one, because I think it's where we need to move. We need to get our high school in shape.
And, and we have subcommittees of the school committee for each of these.
Mm-hmm, yep. And safety and security was added, um, just kind of as a, a response to a request of the school committee. But, um, you know, we have safety and security measures in place. We have town resource officers. Some of that can be shared with us in terms of what we do. Some of it is very private information to, how you respond to something, and really isn't shared with the general public because you don't want people to know how you're going to respond to a crisis, because then they'll know what you're going to do, and they'll do something different. So, um, there's some stuff we can know, there's so, a lot of stuff we can't. But what the subcommittee wanted to see was that we are using those resource officers that the towns are providing for us, and that we are, um, have appropriate measures in place.
So the goal, the benchmark as written is, is, with the red, nothing's crossed out? So this is the benchmark?
Correct, yep, yep, yep.
With the timeline of March and June, okay. Anyone want to add to that, or?
And then, the next one, the second part, standard two, was the fiscal systems. And that was also Alan's professional practice goal. And that was to really get a better handle on our finance process, our budgeting process. To involve the towns, to involve us more earlier on. You know, once the governor's budget's released, have stakeholder meetings. And it says first two Saturdays in February, but I don't, I don't know if we can, maybe we need to say the first two Saturdays after the governor releases his budget. Um, and then, um, you know, really looking for two percent increase from the communities. And so that means that when the leadership team is developing its needs, um, they are going to have to, not that, not everything is a need, and we realize everything's a need, but they're going to have to do some whittling down before it even comes to us.
So we are presenting a two percent?
Two percent increase, yeah.
I agree with that.
And so we...
But where does it say two percent here?
Says it in the key action, key action.
Second column in the bottom.
Last sentence.
Minimum of two percent increase must be the goal.
All right, wait a minute, minimum?
Well, it says a minimum, but...
Maximum?
No.
No.
Minimum, minimum. Because we may need more than that.
Yeah, but I, I, we can't go to them a five.
Right.
We can.
No, but we shouldn't. And we, we, we heard them last year, and I think we need to respect what, what was given to us. So making it part of the goal, to keep it in a window? Maybe we put, present it to us, minimum of two percent, maximum of three, so we can work within that number?
Is there any reason to put a ceiling on it, though?
Uh, yes, because our towns, I think we need to show our towns that we heard what they said last year.
A point seven-five increase this year. It's shameful.
And they, they screamed at us because of the, the number we came to.
So it doesn't really matter what we put in.
And I would like to see their response to us, when we go to them with a two and a half percent budget, what's their answer going to be this year?
No.
We heard you, we listened, two and a half percent, and now you're going to tell us what? We can't ask for more than two, two and a half percent should be, okay, thank you.
Well, the, the thing, I think, I think, I think what, I think the number is used in two ways. One, to address the towns' issues that, you know, five percent, six percent, ten percent, whatever, is not affordable. But the other is to say to the leadership team, you have a responsibility to look at the budget that you have, and new and additional needs, and really, really prioritize
And stay between these two numbers.
before it even comes to us. Because we get this, this needless, which is a need, it's not a wish, it's not a, you know, wouldn't it be nice if, you know, we could paint all the walls green? You know, it's, it, these are needs. We need Chromebooks in the, the schools. But we also know we can't afford, our towns cannot afford a five percent increase. So, is it Chromebooks at every grade, is it Chromebooks at one grade a year? And taking the needs and prioritizing them from the leadership. Because I don't know, from student learning, if my goal is to improve student learning, I don't know if a Chromebook is, is a higher need than a, than a Stars assessment. And so I think we need to kind of force the leadership team to say, here's our needs under some...
Which is why I think there needs to be a maximum. They need, they need to bring us, not a ten percent increase. They need to bring us their needs between these two goals, so we are in a, a better place. But I, I don't know.
But there, there are a lot of previous goals, like, let's look at the diverse needs. Comprehensive evaluation of special ed program. We don't know what needs that might uncover. We might have an enormous need with an enormous price tag. So how can we then tie their hands and say, can't be more than three percent? I, I, I agree with the minimum two percent, but I, I don't see why we should ever have a cap on it.
I don't think we should put a minimum number, I think we should put a maximum.
I don't think we should put a cap on what the, what the leadership comes to us with in terms of a need. They're, 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 they're not coming to us with Cadillacs, you know? They're, they're coming to us with, you know what? We've had ten years of cuts, we'll just like, like to gain back some of those cuts we did three years ago. And, and to say, and, and, and quite honestly, and I have no problem saying this, too bad for the towns. They neglected the school district for ten years. It's time that we, we have a plan. And I, I understand having a minimum, it has to be a two percent, because otherwise, quite honestly, it's going to be point seven-five again next year.
So why are we going to put ourselves in that position? That's all I'm saying.
What position, to better the district? I, I don't understand.
Dave, Dave had a thought?
Dave has a thing.
I mean, this is, this is a, a, a good discussion, but I don't think that necessarily needs to be in the superintendent's goals. I think that's a, I think that's a budget subcommittee discussion as to what...
The bu, the fiscal altogether?
Well, that came directly from...
No, no, the whole, the whole, you know, a minimum of two percent, it should, should be the goal. But, but if there is a ceiling, that should come out of the budget subcommittee, you know, towards, you know, the leadership to, okay, this year's budget, you know, we want to see at least a two, but no more than, but that...
This is about process.
Right.
This is about the fact that, um, we tended to focus on the wrong numbers and, and not the right numbers.
I agree with that.
And this is simply about process to get the numbers that aren't going to change, and people can't say, we didn't see them, we didn't understand them, we asked for them and we didn't get them. This is about process so that we can hopefully get to systematic increases. We did the exercise my first year, it doesn't have to be three and four and five percent. But we can't have four of the past eight years have a budget that's reduced.
Right.
And that's what we had. And we can't have an eight-year span which averages point six-one percent increase in the general fund budget. You can't do that. Well, you can, but you get what you get. And I think the process is only to outline the true needs, why we're asking for them, where we've been, where we want to go, and then, um, have the, the roundtable discussions leading off on two successive Saturdays, and then going forward from there.
And we can take out that, take out the, take out the last sentence, we can take that out. Because it does say, needs to have a systematic increases each year. I mean, that's what, that's what...
The school committee this past year adopted a three-point-six percent increase. In many districts, that's not extravagant. We also know in this district, it is a challenge to meet that number. But that was the true reflective need across the district. But to go from a three-point-six to less than one is hard to do. And, um, I think that that's the, the discussion we have, um, as we go forward. It has to be systematic increases each year. It can't be focusing on one small number that then has a negative impact across the district. So, the, this goal is all about improving the process and making it streamlined, making it, um, all-inclusive with, with unchanged documentation from A to Z.
So we want to see those documents early, and we want them to carry through the, each step of the process.
Yeah, so I, I agree with what you said, Alan, it should be about the process, so all, all the steps should be processed. And I think, I mean, yeah, I would love to say minimum of two, but I don't know what that's going to get us by putting that in your goal. Your, your goal should be the process and the steps you take to get there, not...
All right, I can...
So maybe just knock off that, a minimum of one, two percent, knock off that.
Okay.
So we're taking the...
Yeah. And then the last one is professional culture. Develop a comprehensive communication plan to ensure all stakeholders are clear on the goals and the progress. It really came from the one that we showed some progress from last year. The review of the school committee policies, I don't think should be an action step for Alan. That's us.
That's us.
So I think that has to be a minos.
So I think that has to be a minis. But the fact that, you know, he should attend various meetings of various stakeholders, town, you know, budget, the buzzer pusses, PTOs, I think he's already gone to one or more of them.
I can't make too many more meetings than I made last year.
Exactly. But I think, you know, I think, but I think we, but the point there is, you're right, you can't. We have to keep a better, we have to have a better understanding of what you are doing.
Although a lot of you were with me-
Most of you.
-in many of those meetings, so.
And our, our updates for our school committee will become bi-weekly instead of weekly. So on the off weeks of these meetings.
Yeah.
And Alan, I think you gave us a copy of your blog, or your one blog.
It's in the back, yeah, of the, of the packet.
And then using one call more often as a way to, to update people if there's important information. And fostering leadership team interactions with staff. And how are we going to, you know, what are the benchmarks to measure that? One of the things that I think, and again, this was personal conversation, we can take it out or not, but really having a good understanding for our community of when they have issues, what is, and it's in his blog right now, but what is that communication? What, because social media has become such an avenue for, I can complain. And, you know, I can make the comment that the school board forced this to happen when it's not true, it hasn't had a discussion about it. And, and then, you know, members of the school committee kind of get their backs up against the wall and feel like they have to answer to everything, and that's really, you know, not our role. And that, you know, there, if it's a classroom, it's to the teacher. If it's a school issue, it's to the principal, and so forth and so on. And that, you know, if it's a budget issue, you come see us. If it's a school policy issue, absolutely. But, you know, the, kind of the day-to-day operations-
Just follow the chain of command.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and, and so really letting, really using this year to kind of let people know, you know, what that is.
Because I think as a, as a leadership team and as a faculty, as a faculty across the district, we do respond when we do know what the concerns are. And, and obviously, then if you don't get a response, or it's not one that you think is appropriate, then go up the ladder, you know, and, and-
And it would be the same thing if a staff person, you know, had an issue, or a parent, or a student themselves, or, or whatever. And then really requesting to Alan to ensure that we get more from the leadership about what they're doing in the schools, that we, that we, the community, you know, if they come to the meetings in the community, we have those presentations from different grades and different, you know, not just the athletic teams, but, you know, what are the needs of the students in our district based on school assessments, evaluations, whatever, that we, we get that more often.
So I really like the one call, using, utilizing the one call. And would there be any harm in, in, in using the one call for positive things?
Right, right.
So it just, you, when you said it, I just had this vision of, you know, I think it was last week, a one call went out, and someone was like, I just missed a one call. What, like, everyone's always, what is that for?
Right, there's an emergency, there's no school-
So what if it's for the positive things? Like, hi, this is Alan Himmelberger, and I want, I would just want you to know I updated my blog today.
Yeah.
Please feel free to find it at, in, in that way, it's, you know, just the-
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's two, two trains of thought on this.
I'll ask for, for your guidance on this, and I'll tell you my philosophy. Because those phone calls are usually of a serious nature, whether it's a warning about something going on in the schools, or no school, or a public safety issue, that, that's what that vehicle is used for. And I have never used it, the phone, the phone, for a, a lot of the other things.
I just took it as that you were going to. So am I mistaking?
Well, I, I-
No, I think that was the subcommittee wanting, wanting that.
I agree.
No, but, but I think-
When I hear that phone-
Right.
I better pay attention because it's important to me or my children's safety.
People are listening.
But, but let's say it's time to have a town meeting on the budget. Is not a one call important to say, you know, hey, we're going to explain our budget-
We did that with Dr. Davis that year. We did, did use it.
And, and, you know, come to the-
We do it once or twice in that kind of situation. But I have kids in three different schools this year, so I've got three principals making those calls, Alan making those calls. And you're right, I definitely think, oh, something's up. Like, I gotta listen. If I start getting these crazy, I'm not going to listen.
Right.
But I also think as our, as our technology is developed, and this may not be able to be a goal for this year, but as our technology, we, we need to be able to use email or even not texting, I don't, because I don't think we'd have those. But I think we need to have another way for people to get out that general information.
I agree.
You know, that an email goes, if I get 20 emails and I don't want to read them, I just, you know, phew, 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 phew. We need-
That's what happened to my email.
I agree with the emails, but I'm with Terrence. The one call, I, I say leave that to-
Better system. And I think as our technology develops, perhaps there's a way that people can sign up for the email messages that they want. In other words, if my child is associated with the band, and the band sends out some, something, then I get that. But if my child is not in the band, I don't get that. So there's got to be-
You can, you can choose what list and information you want to get.
Correct. And I, so I think it's that kind of, you know, communication that I'd like to see.
So I think we need to take the one call out then, if he's not going to be comfortable using it, and we're going to wait for it. I don't, I just got the feeling that it's not something you want to utilize.
Well, the problem is, if you use it for all sorts of miscellaneous stuff, when there is something important, people tend not to listen.
True.
I agree.
And that's, that's the difficulty with it.
True.
The only other thing that I would, I would add is that, you know, there's a 50% responsibility from the leaders and Alan to do in this. The other 50% is on everyone else-
Absolutely.
-to access it. How many times have we said to public people that come in here, our meeting minutes are online, you can get them, you can go up and get them. They need to go up and get them. I get a newsletter, a wonderful newsletter, almost every other week from, from the high school principal. It's unbelievable. It's awesome. I have to be the one to open it and look at it, though. So when, when I hear, when I see leadership members will present ongoing achievements, they're already doing that, as far as I'm concerned, through the news, newsletters that they send out. If people don't choose to open it, or choose to sign up for it, it's on the people. It's not, it isn't on the leadership or Alan.
Right. But I think, I think we can do a better job, and Alan can do a better job, of letting people know that those resources are out there. Because you're getting this newsletter-
That's the communication piece.
But-
I would agree with that.
How are you getting it?
I signed, well, I signed up for it. I see it on Facebook.
Yeah, but not everybody's on Facebook.
So I just said to Alan, I said, why don't you use it for your blog?
Right.
Right. Nobody right now, I mean, yes, once it's out there and everyone has it, but it's, it's something new. So how do you-
Have to hit multiple channels.
Correct.
Yeah. Email.
Instagram, tweet it, Facebook it, text it.
Yeah, texting, anyway.
I, well-
People pay for texting.
Texting.
No, no, I'm kidding.
Do they still?
I'm saying as far as getting the health information out there.
So that's, that's where we are. Are we good, are we? So I have one, I would like to just say, add one thing, or if, if you feel like it doesn't fit, I, I would like to put on here how we're going to collect the benchmarks. In that way, we avoid the confusion of a point that Jane made about our responsibility for, I think right now is a good time to talk about it because we're starting this new year.
Well, I do, I, I mean, we tried to create a, a benchmark that was either a piece of paper, or a report, or whatever. And I, I, you know, they come at different times during the year. And I guess I think it's the responsibility of this subcommittee.
Well, I, I think as the chair, I would, what I was going to recommend, and if the subcommittee wants to do it, that's fine, too, is actually just like a simple binder. And as it's presented through the year, if it's paper, or if it's something else that comes in an email, it can be printed out. And at the end of this meeting, just be like, Alan can be like, please add this to the binder. And then it, at the end of the year, it, anyone, it's there for anyone's viewing.
Who wants to, right.
So, I mean, I'm willing to actually do that, or the subcommittee can, I, I do think it should be one person, not all of us having our own binder.
Right.
I think one copy is sufficient for, and, and it's stuff that's presented to us in our packets, however.
Right. And I, and I think, and I think if we all, you know, maybe some of us make mental notes to say, hey, you know, as something's presented to us, remember this is the piece of, you know, one of the things we were looking for. But, yeah, I'm willing, I'm willing to, to collect, yeah.
I'm opposed to a binder.
So a binder, and just not something additional, but what you brought to the meeting as data for your-
No, and I don't even know if it has to be a, a binder per se, but it's a tracking of this. Somebody is responsible for the tracking as we go through.
It's a collection.
The collection, yeah.
But you started with, we are responsible for tracking that.
Yeah, I did, that's true.
We are responsible for that. So why is Alan, why is Alan responsible?
Because if we can streamline it and help each other-
Can I just finish?
He provides it.
Why is, why are we going to mark Alan negative?
To hand over his data.
All right.
That's my request. I think Alan, if Alan's bringing it to a meeting-
Let me know when I can finish.
Go ahead.
I can go now?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought Alan wanted to say something.
Whatever. It's fine. If Alan wants to do a binder, let him do a binder.
I, I don't think it's an unfair request.
I think it negates our responsibility to do our job as school committee members.
And that's your opinion.
That's right.
And my opinion is, I'd like to have a binder.
And it's also the opinion that the chair and the vice chair need to meet consistently with the superintendent throughout the year-
I'm sorry, do you know when we've met and not met?
To also gather it. Okay? So maybe the school committee needs to track that.
And, and, okay, so I'm requesting as, as the chair-
The school committee probably needs to track that, in terms of their evaluation.
I'm requesting as the chair, so I can keep track of it for the committee, that when, any, any time it's brought to us, whether it's January of 2017, or after the Chromebooks are brought to us, that something is handed to me, so I can keep track of it as the chair. So there's my request.
But wait, 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 no, okay, see, now I'm not-
You can make a request, but it's the majority of this committee that makes decisions.
But-
You can make whatever request you want, but if the majority of this committee decides not to do it, it's not happening.
I'm not asking you to do it, Bill. I'm asking the superintendent to do it.
You're asking the committee to make a decision about what the superintendent's going to hand in for an evaluation, or what you want. I want to know what the committee wants.
And, and I guess you confused me by your very last statement, because you said Alan will give me. I, the way I perceive it, as a member of this school committee, is that throughout the year, Alan presents information to us in a variety of formats, in a variety of ways. And it would, what I was first hearing you say was, it would be a responsibility of this, we have an evaluations committee, subcommittee, it would be their responsibility to say, you know what, this is a good piece, it just came to, like, this audit, let's say there was a, a budget thing, this, you know, this came to me, I'm going to keep it, so that if anybody does have questions at the end of the year, but I'm going to keep it. Not to be Alan's responsibility to say, you know, Jane, this is part of my evaluation, stick that in your binder.
I, I only added that piece because Bill just said it's the responsibility of the chair and the vice chair. For some reason, he feels like we're not, I, I think he feels like we're not meeting with them-
No, no, to meet with the superintendent.
Meeting with Alan on a regular basis, but then we're micromanaging. So I'm not sure how we're not doing it, but we're doing it too much. Only because Bill just said that, that it's the responsibility of the chair, I, I added that last piece. My original request, which I made notes of while we were going along, is just a simple binder, whether it's the subcommittee, or I would be willing to do it as the chair, that is just holding on to that information as it's presented through the year. Because at the end of the year, it is our responsibility, as eight separate people, to be able to find that information. I was offering to make it easier. And I still stand with that. That, that is how I would prefer. It was just a request, either of the subcommittee, or if Bill feels better about the, the chair and the, and the vice chair, meeting and gathering that information-
Not what I said.
-on a weekly basis.
Not what I said.
No, you're, I know what you're saying. You're saying two separate things, actually.
Right, I am.
You're saying that we're not meeting with them enough, and that we should be-
All I'm saying-
Collecting the data on a weekly basis.
All I'm saying, Erin, is that if you're proposing, a decision takes place-
I'm not asking for a decision.
Put it to a vote on this committee.
I'm not asking to put anything to a vote. I said, when I started, I said, I don't know if we'd want it to be part of, to collect the benchmarks. I was putting out, I was opening a conversation. I'm not asking to vote on anything. I'm not asking to make a motion to make everyone put their name on it, Bill. I'm asking for a way to collect our data in one place. It does not need to be a motion. I would trust that it would be handled that way, if we talk about it here today. And then next June, when we're sitting here talking about Alan's evaluation, we can say, here's the documentation that we've gotten through the year. It doesn't need to be a motion. I'm not making a motion. I'm making a request-
Okay.
-on how we gather the information.
Okay. So how does everyone else gather information in terms of the district when they get evaluated?
When, when a teacher gets evaluated, they, they present, using an electronic portfolio of things they've done throughout the year.
But we've already all decided, Alan-
They, they choose what goes in, what documents, what numbers, whatever. They present at the back up their goals, as, as best, you know, shows their performance. But it's from the evaluator to the evaluator. And, and you're right, usually nowadays, it's 9% of teachers do it electronically.
But we've all just sat here and talked about what benchmarks we're expecting, at what times of the year, and it's going to be presented at these meetings, on paper.
There could easily be a Google folder that Alan slides stuff in that we all have access to.
But then we're asking Alan to keep the documentation in. You just said it was our responsibility to do that.
I think that to expect any superintendent to keep the hard copy traditional binder that started out with, with what the, the evaluation process started with is a challenge, only because the days are just jam-packed with stuff sometimes that you don't even know is happening. Certainly, I think it's probably easier if I keep the, the, either the, some form of electronic or hard copy to support this. I just can't get seven of each one.
That's not what we asked.
Yeah.
I'm recommending that after the meeting, you can say, Erin, this was, this was the update on the special ed. I, I don't, I'm not asking for you to make seven copies. I'm not asking for a Google folder that you are responsible for. It's something that's already, already going to be brought to us at this meeting.
That's right.
And it's going to be kept in, just in a, in order for us-
Or just checked off as we go through the year, so you know that, that benchmark was met in January. Done.
And the document is X.
Well, and, and, and in the guidelines that the professional body puts out, I don't know what the, I keep, M, M-
M A C.
M A S, C S S, C S, whatever.
M A C.
They say, gathering evidence can be a special challenge to, to school committee members, but it is the school committee members' responsibility to collect evidence. What, what the superintendent does is administrative and can be confidential. Unlike a superintendent, unlike the superintendent or principal who may make unannounced observations of a teacher, school committee members cannot intrude on the confidential meetings of the superintendent. So it's, it's, but it's not intended, if you read through this stuff, for the superintendent to present his binder, like, it's not intended to be a teacher's evaluation.
All at once.
It's, it's intended to be a professional, if you were in the corporate world, the way a, you know, president would evaluate a vice, being going to meet at the end of the year, and, you know, ooh, throughout the year, these were the highlights, these were the lowlights, you keep working on this kind of stuff. But it is important to have a good set of evidence agreed upon in advance. And so that's really what the purpose of this document was, is what was that evidence that we should all be looking for in advance? Can we agree that this is the evidence that we'll be looking for, whether somebody wants to collect the evidence, so that if somebody forgets it was presented, great, great, it'd be great. But I don't think that's Alan's responsibility. I think, like Erin said, that, you know, it should be this committee's, or, or hers, or whoever.
But we're, because we're putting certain dates in here. So in January of 2017-
Right.
I, I don't think we moved that date. We're going to be given an update on the Chromebooks. So what I'm saying is, if we compile it into one folder for all of us to use, there will be no mistaking when we're going back to fill out Alan's evaluation next year on what was presented to us. We have a lot of dates in here where he's, we're going to be waiting for him to bring us things.
Well, and, and-
Not, not, not extra work, it's already in here.
And I think it's the responsibility of the subcommittee to, to stay on top of that, too. You know, kind of, hey, remember, we're looking for blah, 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 blah. But it does add a lot of, this does add a lot of work to the superintendent's already very busy.
The goal's easy.
So, so I ask the question again, are there, are there, are there too many things I mean, we took out the policies, because that's really our job. We didn't take anything else out.
We, we're clarifying the special ed model.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In the words of my good friend John Eldredge, giddy up.
I was waiting for anyone to answer Jane's question. So I personally don't, I don't know if there's anything we can take out.
Okay.
I feel like it's priceless if we do anyway.
Yeah.
The only thing new is the schools, the number four, the little improvements at the high school and complex.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So we're leaving it as it is, except that we're waiting for number two.
Little changes that we made. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. In your packet is a copy of the district improvement plan that the leadership team has worked on. And as Jane pointed out, a lot of this matches up with my goals. There are five here, and the leadership team, I think, is confident that this is the work that we will do for this year. Goal number one, continue to refine and develop the curriculum improvements to increase student achievement. And again, I don't want to read all of this now, given the lateness of the hour, but as you can see, there is using, understanding by design, to continue to develop the curriculum maps. There is the middle school big ideas math program. There is the STAR Assessment and Intervention Program. There is an increase... I'm sorry, on the back of that page, there is the revision of the science curriculum K-8 to reflect the new standards. That's a huge undertaking. And then there's the RTIMTSS to be implemented with integrity, or to continue to implement with integrity. This is... This gets to the core of how we can improve both student achievement, be more efficient with our dollars, and develop a greater professionalism across all staff. District goal number two, improve the delivery of special education services. Increase the use of inclusive settings. Enhance and expand the co-teaching model. Maintain the continuum of service delivery. Establish PBIS in all schools. I'm sorry. New goal. So that was goal two. Goal three is a very important topic that we are all facing as educators across the Commonwealth. Ensure the social and emotional well-being of all students. And, you know, it's not just the students on IEPs, or the students who are at risk, or the students who are ELL. This is all of our students. And many of our students come with anxiety, with depression, with something that gets in the way of them accessing their education. And the PBIS program is certainly huge to this. Increasing the personalization in all classrooms, making sure that all students know of adults in their world during the day that they can count on.
And so what does PBIS stand for?
Positive Behavior Intervention. And the social-emotional well-being is critical, and driven by many factors. From devices and social media, and the anxiety around that, to families that are overworked, and not connecting well, and disengaging, to pressure to achieve. There's a whole host of issues here. And this is a very important goal that we have. Goal number four, to integrate technology throughout the curriculum, and implement technology throughout the district. We are continuing our Google Apps and Chromebook initiative. We are looking to continue to support other forms of tech integration. This is an area that is expanding rapidly, both in what is being used and how it's being used. We have to get ready for the administration of online state testing, and we only have another year, year, year and a half to do that.
Well, we're going to be doing it this spring.
Right. Where it's enforced in all districts, all grades. And then to develop the digital citizenship within the district. So the technology continues to play a huge role, and a very happy welcome to Sean Bozan, who is one busy guy already. Our district improvement goal number five is to continue to plan for the renovations of JFK and AFM, as well as the high school. I've already had discussions with MSBA, because this is two projects, and how can we do them together? Because they can't wait. They have to be done. And even the timeline through MSBA, we have to submit a statement of interest by January of '17. It doesn't get approved until January of '18, and then it has to be voted. So work probably doesn't start until sometime in 2018. But there's much that needs to be done here, and can't wait any longer to continue. We have a great start with the NSDEC reports that really identifies everything. And from that, we will go and follow MSBA's lead. So those are the five goals on the DIP, and that is what is our mantra and marching orders for this year. And as you can see, a lot of them do adopt into my goals as well. The FY '17 budget, as Dave had mentioned, got off to a desperately dismal start, because we were on a 112 budget in July and August, hence my professional practice goal. It is so important that we do not put ourselves in deficit again to start the year. And so I think by doing that process, we should be in much better shape to give everybody all the information to make their value judgments on what the right number is for us going forward. The Millville Grade Five teacher has been hired, Kelsey Upstrom. She is wonderful. And working with Mrs. Faulkner, and all of the staff, and all of the classrooms are set and ready to go. I think there is a sense of joie de vie, if I can use that term, in that building, that every school in the state should emulate. From the kids who gather around me like I have something important to say, to staff who is just smiling all the time, to Dr. Hawke's steady hand, that the building just exudes the best of teaching and learning. And we welcome Kelsey to Grade Five, and the classes will be official as she starts officially teaching on Monday, the 26th. She is on board this week, and we're thrilled to have her with us. And we look forward to continued great things. The accountability information will be released to the public on Monday at 5:00, and we will digest and parse that over the next couple of weeks. We have some good and some not so good, some mixed, but overall, we are moving in the right direction, and I'm very excited about that. The Lions Club vision, I was wise to move him to the next meeting. But that's... The Lions Club does terrific screening, at no cost, for elementary students. So Mr. Catalina will be here next week, next meeting, to explain that to us. We also have Unit C negotiations getting ready to open, so the negotiation subcommittee, I'm looking forward to meeting with you to do that. And there is much keeping us busy this year. But the excitement when you travel in the buildings, and when you see what happens between teacher and student, it is truly remarkable. And we have much to be proud of, and I think my only message is to stay positive to everybody, and to be proud of what you got, and look forward to what we can get, and to continue moving forward. And I think, you know, my onward and upward, I sometimes overuse that, but that's really what we do. And we have so much excitement in every grade, in every classroom. And I'm just thrilled to be having some small part to watching it all unfold. That's my report.
Any questions for Alan?
Oh, I... I'm sorry. I just have one more piece. I neglected to mention that I also included in your packet, there was some information that the committee had asked for. There's a delineation of the dollars that come and go, based upon all of the personnel changes for your edification, as well as the refinements to the budget. It's a two-sided, front and back. But those are exactly what the committee approved in the spring, and those have stayed intact. And at the bottom there, you can see our Chapter 71 was generous this year, which helps to offset some of the other dollars going out. But you can see that we traced that budget process all the way down, and that 22017480 is where we are. So-
What's the R in the outside column?
That's Wen's code. I haven't quite cracked it yet.
Okay.
Where do you see R?
It's right on the side, on the personnel page, on the right to the outside of the column, on the right. I didn't want to delete one. I figured the whole thing would blow up, so I... I figured I'd ask her when she gets better. So that's for your information. And then I also included my blog.
So how are people getting your blog?
If you go on the main page of the website, both Dave and I have the corners, icons at the bottom, the superintendent and assistant superintendent corners, and that's where we will post our blogs as often as we can.
Can you send... Can you do a half-page sheet that goes out to all students? That tells them that... That goes home to parents that you have a blog?
Well, I think, yeah. Dave had done that with his, and moved it to the building principals to include in their Facebook and messages home, so... Yeah, so we will do that.
Basically, we asked the principals to post that link on the school pages as well.
Right. So they'll be able to find it.
Is there a sign-up, that you can sign up to receive it?
Yes, there is. I just turned mine on. I don't know if his is on.
I'm still working on that.
Okay.
Not as advanced as Dr. Thompson.
Because I just... I mean, I think we think people go to our page, but I don't think people go to our page.
Well, we're going to drive... We'll drive everybody there because of the content.
If you scroll down, our homepage has that big picture.
Well, that's it. But I just... I think if we do more to encourage people to where they will find stuff.
If it was something that said, "You're going to get money," they'd find it on the page.
There you go.
I guarantee you.
There you go.
So they have to take some responsibility. We're talking about giving a note to the people. Sign up for the blog, everybody.
We'll donate a dollar to our budget for everyone that reads this.
If you go to the blog, it's a little thick in the corner, so it's a spoiler.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hillberger. Moving on to the report of the assistant superintendent.
Yes, right now, I am working with the superintendent. He has come a long way. He had more than one tab open this afternoon on his browser, so we are making progress.
I don't think you have to explain that in public.
Good job.
Actually, I spent a wonderful day today, working, or witnessing, the great work of our middle school math staff, as we had our big ideas, our new math program training today, their excitement, their professionalism. You could just see the energy rise in the room as we went through this. So we very well... I believe books have been passed out in sixth grade. And again, we're starting out in sixth grade, then seventh grade, next year in eighth grade. We had a lot of great conversations. They did get the full introduction to all of the suite of online possibilities. So they have gotten that training today. And it just was, you know, again, I mean, the people who work in this district, who work with our children are just fantastic. And their professionalism, I'm just really excited about the possibilities here in this district. So that's the big news. We do have a professional day coming up, October 7th, which is the Friday before the Columbus Day weekend. The teachers and staff will be here working on professional development, while the students enjoy a four-day weekend. But the main focus of that is going to be more training and the understanding by design process, our curriculum design process. We have a trainer coming in from Teachers 21, who'll be working on that first part, essential questions, essential understandings, skills, misunderstandings, all that next piece of our curriculum maps. And then they will have time to do that as well. So that is the main focus for our October meeting, and that has been set up. We will have people signing up beginning of next week. So that's the report from this office.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Thompson? Moving on to public forum, and continuing on to school committee forum.
Okay, well, speaking of one of my other committee responsibilities, I started... You get to pass them around. There's one for everybody. I started looking at our school committee policies. And I said last, at our last meeting, how, you know, I thought I was really smart enough, and we really didn't need to spend $10,000, and we could go through, you know, a few policies at a time. And I opened up the policies, and I opened up the MASC policy guideline directories, and I started comparing, and I said, "Okay, this is way too much, and $10,000 is really cheap to have them do this." Because the plain fact of the matter is, we are way out of date. It's not just like, "We're out of date." We are way out of date. For example, we do not even have a policy on background checks and fingerprinting, which is state law for our staff that we hire. We don't have a school committee policy on query forms, and people in the school needing query forms.
We do them. Make sure you...
We do have them printed. But we do not have any policy.
We don't have them posted.
The policy is just not...
Right.
Somewhere in the archives of Alan's office, there is a policy binder before, that probably was never...
I mean, we have a million. We have a million policies. We have a million. But we haven't updated since 1996.
Right.
And so if we have created policies since then, they aren't in our documents. And if we haven't updated the ones that we have since 1996, because the laws have changed, and so for an individual person to try to do that, not only do you have to figure out, "Did we create the policy through old minutes?" But did the laws change? We're almost better off at starting with the laws. Do we match the laws, and then moving that way? So I don't know if I need to be on... Get that on our agenda at the next meeting, but I really do think we should have a motion, and we should really consider asking for assistance. I mean, we still have to have the subcommittee to work with them, and put the right pieces in the right order, but I do think-
I think you can make a motion to-
Can I do that tonight?
I don't see why not.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we hire the-
MASC.
MASC organization to help us update our policies, and get us on track, and to then host them, so that we get continual updates. They don't become 20 years outdated.
And that was at the cost... Should we put at the cost of $10,000?
Over three years.
Over three years. Over three years. And we're going to try to... We're going to try to get them to-
That's the price.
So motion made by Jane to hire MASC to update our policies and post them, or assist us with that, with the review that Wendy gave us two meetings ago. And $10,000 over the... The cost is $10,000 over the three years. Is there a second to Jane's motion? Second by Tara. Any discussion?
That money's going to come from where?
That $3,300 would come out of school committee budget, over three years.
I just wanted that out there. I'm not challenging that. I just wanted it out there.
So it is coming from the school committee.
They're not going to do it for us.
No, 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 no.
They're going to guide us on doing it.
Correct.
And then use their electronic version.
Right. They put in what we have electronically, and compare to what they have. Because if you look at our policies, it'll say, you know, based on what you proposed in your committee on such and such a date, based on Mass General Law, blah, 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 based on... And then, so each policy has... And so they can compare those things.
Right.
And then we can say, oh... And then we will probably have to come to the school committee and say, you know, have those two readings of the new updated policies and whatever.
All right, so motion made by Jane, and second by Tara. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, Jane.
And the thing that I passed around was our mission statement, which also... I think the... When... And I have to ask the people before my time even, but I'm guessing when you did a strategic plan, you may have redone the mission statement, and you may not have, but I think it's something that we all should look at. So I'll look for feedback on that at our next meeting.
Yeah, I remember Brian and Diane.
Brian, Diane.
This one says July of '96.
Right.
So I think that just means it's not updated on our website, on where you are.
Well, that could be. That could be.
Like 90% of the policies.
Well, the other- 100%.
You know, there was discussion about homework policy this week on social media, and I went, and there's not... There's nothing under a school committee for... A lot of our policies just have... It goes nowhere.
As it was reminded of me, the... As it was reminded of me, the, the, when we do the handbooks for each other things, that's how school committee gets involved. But the homework is guidelines. It's not policies.
And those are in, those are principal-driven for their student handbooks, but under, it made me go to that policy section, and a lot of things were just-
Not there.
Or, as you have printed here, 96. It was just apparently never updated.
So I don't know if somebody has the mission statement, but, because they wouldn't have that.
It used to be on our old website. I think it's on a poster in the entrance of the high school.
Yeah, but if it's not policy manual and approved and dated, then it doesn't help us out much.
Correct. Correct. So that's where we're gonna start.
Which is kind of the problem. There's a lot of policies that have been updated, but they're not in the policy manual.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Jane. Anything else?
No, but I encourage people to go to the home show for the band.
I'm gonna give two shout-outs. One to the cross-country team who won this week. They have a real young team, Cole Bolduc, Noah Larrin, did tremendous. And I can't wait to see them when they're all seniors, you know. We had a bunch of seniors leave last year. Mr. Tringali's son was an anchor. But they're in the process of rebuilding that team, so a lot of shout-outs to them in terms of the coaching and the middle schoolers on the team and so forth. That's gonna be a powerful team in a couple of years. The other thing is, another shout-out to Mr. Dudek in terms of just the communication he's been having. In terms of, as a parent of a high schooler, you know, I feel like I get updated constantly with his, just his format of his newsletter covers everything, covers everything, and it comes out frequently. So I encourage people to look at that if you're in the high school student or a parent of a high school student or even anyone in the district. I'm sure there are, I'm sure the other principals do it as well. But I wanted to give that shout-out, so that's it.
Thank you. And the only thing I was going to mention is the band home show at Medway High School. I've had, I, my daughter's first year, and it is extremely exciting. I haven't even been as involved as I would have wanted to be. And the time and effort they put in, and the parents' effort and energy is unbelievable. I think you really don't know until you are doing it. And I've had a lot of people ask me on Facebook and, or ask me, and like, well, what did you do? And actually, I was never in the band. So it's a new experience for me as a mom, and it's, it's exciting, so.
Isn't Brittany like front and center?
Anyone that can-
Yeah, she's a big part of it.
Front and center.
Anyone that can make it Saturday night, it's, it's nice because it's close to us. I think you'll really have a great night out if you can do that. Upcoming meetings, October 6. Any agenda items you can send them in? It looks like we already have the Lions Club vision screening listed. And I am looking for a motion to go into executive session for matters of union personnel. And only returning to, we're not returning for adjournment, adjourned from, not to return, sorry. Roll call vote, Julian? Yes, no?
Yes, sorry. I'm like, I was watching, I was, I thought Tara was gonna say something, that's all. Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Tara, Erin, yes, Bill, yes. Georgia, yes. And-
Sorry, I was like waiting on you, Karen.